All right.
Okay. I know, I usually end the feed and I usually end the feed with pizza.
All right, if I get everybody, I know, I know, I'll discuss it in a minute, counselor. If I get everybody to stand for the pledge, please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just another quick reminder, the mics are live. We are streaming this and folks can go back and watch this on our village website YouTube page after the fact. But we are live right now. And without further ado, I'm going to make a motion to open up the business meeting for the village board of Cornwall and Hudson on Monday, excuse me, November 21st, 2022. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved and we're going to move forward. All right, I have the pleasure tonight of introducing two folks to provide presentations to us. Folks that aren't here are going to be able to watch this tonight. I feel like two of them are friends of mine and folks that have been movers and shakers in Orange County for some time. And first, I'm going to introduce Sheriff-elect Paul Arteta. Paul's going to be taking over the Orange County Sheriff Office on January 1st. Paul, you get sworn in. Paul and I worked together a number of years in Newburgh and across the region. And I just thought it would be appropriate for him to kind of say hello to us. And then if there's some questions from the board, Paul said he'd be happy to take them. So without, without further ado, Sheriff-elect Arteta.
Thank you. So like Jimmy said, I mean, Mayor Jimmy, we worked together a while ago on our Safe Streets Task Force. We did a lot of good things around the whole region. I, I've been running for about almost two years now and came to a very successful conclusion, winning the election. And I'm very grateful if you voted for me. And I, I love to do a lot of good things at the sheriff's office. One of the things is we're going to work on our jail inmates and the prisoner population, bringing some new programs to help them out so that we don't see them go commit further crimes when they get out of jail. So we have quite a few programs that we've talked to several other sheriffs about. And we're excited to bring some of that to the sheriff's office. One of the big, big things that I ran on was the fentanyl overdose deaths. And we're going to work on our narcotics task force. When Jimmy let me go from the Safe Streets Task Force, I was tasked by the sheriff and the DA to create the Orange County Drug Task Force, which I did, which is still running today. And we're looking to enhance that, that drug task force and bring in several of the different communities and, and work together. When we collaborate, we, we get a lot more done, a heck of a lot more throughout the county. And that's what we're looking to do. Never mind all of the, the crazy nonsense coming out of Albany about not bringing, putting people in jail. If we can arrest these folks, take their drugs off of them, that's part of the problem that, that we could fix in our county. And, and we're looking, this, this is the first meeting that I've been to so far. I plan on hitting every single town and village, every single police department in my first hundred days to just go over and see what, what your needs are, what you think of the sheriff's office, what you think the sheriff's office should bring to you. And this is a great start. It's your number one on my list already. So without anything further, if you have any questions, shoot.
I'll say Paul, Paul and I worked together for five years in Goshen, across Orange, Duchess and Sullivan Counties. And I can say this with a straight face, for those five years, Paul was an apolitical guy and never knew what his politics were. Paul was a guy that just wanted to go out and make our neighborhoods and our communities safer and truly, truly appreciate it. I've got one question and then I'll turn it over to the board in case anybody hears any questions. One of the big things, and we, we began this a couple of years ago when the governor, at the time, Governor Cuomo came down with a collaboration initiative out of, out of Albany. And one of the big things, and we, we worked on this on the task force, is this going to be a big piece of the sheriff's office in regards to community outreach? And how do we get communities, or a number of communities here that, that need policing and that want policing, but want to make sure that the police are responsive to them, are respectful to them? What are your thoughts going forward on how we can, how we can make the relationships between communities and the police that police them better?
I, I think just the communication with all the different entities. I don't think that different communities have seen the sheriff much or, or some of the sheriff's folks. And we want to break that barrier. We want to get out and actually speak to people and find out what their, what their needs are, what, what they think that the sheriff's office should be doing. And, and frankly, we could tell them what, you know, what we have and what we can do for your communities. You know, we have different units. We have the boat unit, the bike unit, narcotics unit, the SOG unit, which is a SWAT team. We have a lot of different things at the sheriff's office to enhance your different police agencies and for, for whatever. If you have a parade or the airshow or a lot of different large events that we have, or, you know, heaven forbid, another protest. You know, we, we're there to protect the protesters. We're not there to, to, you know, just stop people from expressing their, their freedom and their fundamental rights. We're there to protect them to make sure nobody gets hurt.
Any other board members with questions?
Can you elaborate on what you said about the crazy stuff coming out of Albany about not putting people in jail? I'm confused.
Well, a lot of, a lot of the different crimes today, you get an appearance ticket and you're released. We're not holding a lot of criminals like we used to. And I think that a lot of these criminals, when we arrest them, they need at least a cooling off period. We need to give back the authority to the judges to make that decision. So that if the person is determined to be a menace to society or, or danger to himself, that the, the judges have the authority to put somebody in jail, at least for a cooling down period somewhat.
But just to be clear, you're in favor of enforcing the law as it exists, but you seem to disagree with it. Is that?
I don't disagree with the law, enforcing the law.
It's crazy stuff.
But, but some of it, unfortunately, we're seeing bad people get arrested and they're out before we get off our shift.
I think one of the things coming up, and I think Albany is going to, to, to deal with this in January in their session, is in regards to judicial discretion. And I think that was something that was taken away from our judges when bail reform was passed. And I think that if you look at this and study this like some of us do in regards to the uptick in crime, a big piece of that is the fact that judges' hands are tied. And many of them say, we can't do anything about this. We are forced to, to put this recidivist back out on the street after their 56th arrest for the same thing. We all agree that our system needs, needs some fixing and that poor people shouldn't be treated any differently than people with means. But the fact that we do have a revolving door in our justice system, I think that's where you were going with that is, is frustrating.
I, I think they should have taken baby steps to push all that out instead of one big boom and we had to change everything overnight. And, and I think as you saw before the election, they were starting to back off a lot of the, the different laws they, they put out on us.
Anybody else?
No, just to comment, I think we'd be hard pressed to replace the deputy sheriffs that are present in our school system every day. It's really refreshing to have them there, point of first contact for everybody. And it's really needed because we, we had a pretty open system here. And, you know, Steve doesn't have the force to, to man this in the school system. I think we have a good system, one of the best that I've seen around. So we couldn't do it without the sheriff's department, without their support of those officers every day at all the schools. And like I said, that's a point of first contact and it's really important. It serves as deterrent. Not only that, it, it serves as, as security for everyone who's involved. A lot of stuff happens in our schools every day and it's really important that they're there at the front door.
Right now, that's one of the biggest divisions at the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
And although the deputies that we've hired for are actually anxious to work. It's not, you know, just somebody that came off the street and just needs the money. They, they're actually anxious and they'll select a school that they have some relationship with, whether they have a grandchild or a son or a daughter at the school. So it works out even better because they have, there, there's more life into that person being in that, that setting.
You know, we, we came out of the old SRO system, which was a good system. The, the count, the town shared the burden of the cost for a while. And then they decided they didn't want it and the SRO disappeared. And these people, just because I'm in, in and out of all the schools all the time, these people all have been there for a while now. They all have relationships with, not only with the kids, but with the teachers, the administrators, and that's important. Most of them have been there since the, I haven't seen too many replaced. Most of them have been there since the system started, since we took them on. So that's, that's an important part of that.
Yeah, there's a lot of training involved, which is completely necessary. So we, we, we train them and set them out with all the equipment that they need. And, you know, God forbid, you know, the inevitable happens.
One of the things I think selfishly that when you go around and you're doing this here first with the village of Cornwall and Hudson, I know that the supervisor in the town, Joshua Jahaski, would like to have you in to do the same thing. I think when you go around in your first hundred days, like you've committed to, to meeting with all the different enclaves and communities, you know, during the summer, we run summer camps. And one of the things that we had to do this year with the, with the help of Chief Dixon, we had to put a, a police officer there because obviously at the end of the school year, the sheriff's department says, okay, we do the nine months and then we're out. Is that something the sheriff's department would consider down the road? I know you talked about doing budget stuff. Everything costs money. But as we look forward, is that something you think communities need to figure out on their own when they're using school facilities in the summertime for summer camp?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that because we're seeing, since COVID's kind of relaxed, we're seeing a lot more sports and after school activities where you still need the same security.
Yep. That's true. Anybody else?
Quick question.
Go ahead, Rich, trust Taylor.
No, no, no. Quick question for you. Considering the chaos that's going on at the border and these migrant flights that come into Stewart, is the sheriff's department involved in that at all?
I was as a deputy police chief. The first one that we had seen, we stopped the bus in the village of Montgomery. The second one, the sheriff's office was alerted and a few deputies were there when the two flights came in. As far as what the sheriff's office is doing currently, I'm not aware of any, anything else that they're, they're doing in conjunction with the, the county executive or the federal government.
Anybody else from the DAS? Sheriff-elect, good luck.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you come January 1st and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, moving on, I have the pleasure to introduce another friend of mine. Bill Friarvanti is the current CEO of the Orange County Industrial Development Agency. And unfortunately, I was unable to last month or the month before, attend the meeting for the Orange County Association of Town Villages and Cities, where Bill gave, from what I heard from every account, a wonderful presentation in regards to what the Orange County IDA does. And one of the things that he was looking at doing was dispel some of the myths that I think that have been put out there. I want to say this upfront, the village of Cornwall and Hudson and the town of Cornwall currently have zero projects in front of this man or in front of the IDA. I just thought that it would be a wonderful thing for us to kind of get the same briefing in a short 15 to 20 minute span so that we can better understand how the IDA works. And I have to admit that until recently, I didn't know either. I thought it was this magical mystery thing and didn't really understand it until I started digging in deeper. And Bill has graciously offered to come in and give us a presentation and then take some questions from the DAS tonight. So Bill, without further ado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you having me and the entire Board of Trustees. I don't know if you're like a judge, can I, do I have to ask to approach the bench here? I want to, I want to.
No, I think you're good.
Want to hand these out? I know you'll have it on the screen. I think all your constituents will be able to do the livestream.
Appreciate it.
But it's good to have a hard copy here.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know if I will be as calm and measured as the sheriff-elect is. I'm a high energy guy and I tend to speak quickly. And when I have a timeframe, sometimes I speak even more quickly. So I'm going to try and make sure you can understand me. And although I'm not going to stay after the meeting, I'm going to go put my kids to bed. My phone number is at the end of this presentation. I'm going to leave some business cards if I may. I usually hand out my cellphone, people can call me. I like to say, you know, anytime, day or night, but my wife may be watching, so I really.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of those for sure.
And some of your constituents and, and folks here, maybe a trustee or two may have heard this before. This is basically kind of a road show I've been doing recently. I was named as the, the Orange County IDA, well, CEO, I don't, you like to use that term for me, but I call myself the director most of the time. It was a year ago tomorrow, interestingly enough. So I've been certainly trying to dispel a lot of myths and help people understand really how the IDA works because I think that's, that's always been a problem.
You're going to point to Mr. Frankel to advance slides.
Terrific, thank you, terrific.
Say slide.
Absolutely, we'll go to the next slide, please. Just going to start very quickly, this is just a little timeline put together. Again, it was a year ago that I was hired as the permanent CEO, but I was actually brought in April 1st of 2021. Shortly before that, the county legislator, legislature removed all of the board members. At the time, there was malfeasance going on. There were a couple of bad actors in there that frankly were bilking valuable funds out of the IDA. And the legislature certainly held the entire organization accountable, including the board members. So they removed all seven board members and we had a temporary board until January. And I give those folks a lot of credit for kind of dragging this agency through a very difficult time when, I don't, I don't mean to be silly about this, but it seemed like every report I, I gave them, there was a quote unquote dead body around every corner of the new terrible things we were finding. So I give them a lot of credit for going through that and it's thankless work on the board. I do get paid for this work, but the board members are all, you know, unpaid. It's volunteer work, so I give them a lot of credit. And we have basically rebuilt the organization, I would say, from the ground up, re procuring everything from legal services to cleaning services and everything in between. So this gives you a little set of, sense of where we are. And we, I believe it was in the beginning of September, the county legislature added two final board members to our permanent board. So we had a full slate just a couple of months ago. So we actually just refinished that, just finished that rebuilding. Next slide, please. This is just the mission of the county IDA, which essentially it's, it's about growing the economy, both by attracting new businesses and helping current businesses that are here thrive and, and expand. And we do it through a very select, narrow set of, of powers that New York State gives us. Next slide, please. This is a very important slide. You know, you can click right through this if you like, sir. Why are IDs even necessary? Well, number one, I don't know why that first one got shrunk, but the cost of doing business in New York State. If you don't know, we're in a strict competition, a fierce competition with California and others to be the most costly state to do business in, highly regulated, unfunded mandates in that, in that regard in terms of regulation. And, you know, I really wish, I mean this with, from the bottom of my heart, I wish we didn't need an IDA. If we were more competitive in terms of a place to do business, we wouldn't have an IDA and I'd be doing something else gladly, frankly. But that is not the case right now and we are competing with New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, other states even further outside the, the, the close proximity for these exciting types of projects that we're looking for. So that's the number one reason. Assistant closing large projects, sure. We do work closely with the Orange County Partnership. That is kind of the de facto economic development office here in the county that's working to attract companies. Now, they are at this point a completely private, not-for-profit. They're totally self-funded with their own members that they, that they bring in. The county and the IDA used to give them funding, but no longer. Now they're independent and I think it's best for everyone in that regard. But we still highly regard the work that they do. They are really regarded as one of the best offices in the state, if not the best, in terms of, again, courting those types of projects and, and kind of moving them through the various processes, including funding and incentives. And they oftentimes bring projects to us and, you know, I guess we'll say I'm a baseball guy as I know you are, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, your team's a little further ahead than mine has been. But regardless, you know, we're, we're the closer in, in that regard oftentimes. So that's another reason we're here. And tax certainty and predictability, certain projects, projects are not necessarily looking for any sort of tax savings, but they're looking for tax certainty because typically if those folks don't know how, how it works, a property is assessed for a certain value and the taxes based upon your tax rate, your local county, state, there are taxes levied against them. Some projects, specifically energy projects, large energy projects, you're hearing about the Shem Plain Hudson Power Line, this, that and the other, they don't want to be assessed every year and, and some points grieve them and go into actual litigious situation to fight that. Pilots or, or payment in lieu of taxes, kind of a set, set of tax payments that the IDA brings forward, provides that predictability. They will know for 10 years, 15 years, here's how, what your taxes will be, here's how they'll increase. You can stop me at any point in time, Mr. Mayor, if you want to ask. Okay. And the last thing is one other item on there, guaranteed construction, local construction labor. In 2016, the IDA passed a local labor policy and that is construction labor. So any project that's incentivized in any way, it could be one incentive, could be multiple incentives, they have to adhere to our local labor policy. And that requires that for the construction of their project, whatever the scope of that project is per their application of the IDA, it has to be built with 85% local labor. And local labor means men and women that are onsite doing the work. Doesn't matter if the firm is based in New Jersey, we care about who's working onsite, foreman, managers, everyone, down to every single worker. 85% must be from the local work shed, as we call it. And by work shed, we mean not just Orange County. Frankly, we couldn't support all of the work in the area with just, you know, laborers that are in this area. So it's actually the mid-Hudson region down to Westchester, essentially Sullivan, West, Sullivan, Orange, Ulster, Duchess, Putnam, Rockland, Westchester, going down there. And 85% of local, of the construction labor must be from that region. So that's another thing that it, even if, if a project was going to get a state incentive, like a 45B, which is what I'll call kind of half of a pilot, they would not be bound to local labor. So we even could do an equivalent of that 45B, which is a, a commercial property tax incentive that's available as a right. You go to your clerk and you fill it out. But we could do that as well and they'll be tied to local labor, so that's important as well. Next slide, please. Level the playing, this is important and it may be tough for folks to see here, hopefully a little easier at home if you're following. You know, really, I, I don't think I used the term yet, but leveling the playing field. When I talk about surrounding states, surrounding regions, even elsewhere around the United States, we want to make sure that we're kind of competitive and, and our incentives allow us to do that. This is a rare example we have to compare apples to apples, comparing projects that would, would come to Orange County versus those elsewhere, throughout the Northeast at least. Amazon, these are Amazon buildings. And the reason they're great for apples to apples is that they're building very similar types of distribution centers around the region, around the country, so we're able to compare them. On the first column, you'll see the locations that are being compared, Hartford, Connecticut, Northern New Jersey, Central New Jersey, Lehigh Valley, Pennsylvania, Northeast Pennsylvania. And we're comparing that with, with us here. The average square feet you'll see is all around a million square feet. So that, that is the apples to apples. And then you'll look at what is the fourth column, average tax per square foot. So this is a very simple figure to allow you to see what the taxes are per square foot in each of these regions. And you see Hartford is the highest at $1.37. Then it goes down 107, 103, 93 cents in Lehigh Valley, one of our big competitors, 66 cents in Northeast PA, where you're seeing a lot more development happening. And then the next is Amazon with a pilot. That's, that's here in Montgomery where they've built. This is not our IDA, by the way, the town of Montgomery has their own. So it was nice to be able to, to speak outside our, our agency and, and look at a case study like this. $1.46 in taxes per square feet. And by the way, that is with the pilot that this project received in Montgomery. With the pilot, we're higher than all of our neighbors there. And then if you look all the way to the right, this is another way to look at it, taxes a percentage of rent, 23% in Hartford. Then you see the numbers plunge to 12, 15, 16, 13, 24% in Montgomery. Again, with the incentives that we've given them. So you see how we stack up.
Quick question in that regard, do you know what the percentage would be had there not, if you didn't apply the pilot?
You know, I, no, I don't. Easily you're talking over approaching $2 on the dollars per, per square foot in taxes, for sure. It's just very costly in New York and, and where we are as well. The next slide, please, more with leveling the playing field. This is actually just comparing what the Amazon project in Montgomery is generating in taxes, even during the term of their pilot, versus no project happening there and nothing being built. And by the way, that was an assemblage just off 17K and Route 747, meaning a, a number of parcels that are owned by different people that were put together. And I worked in economic development about eight, nine years before this role and we tried to hawk that property. It was very, very difficult. A lot of owners, it took an Amazon of that kind of magnitude to be able to pull everyone together and make it happen. So it's very likely, is my point, that nothing would have happened there. It, it really is, it, it certainly could have happened. You're seeing right there, Coldenham Fire Department, over $2 million in taxes being paid, again, with the pilot, even with the, the savings. Valley Central, you look at that, over 14 million. Highway, town of Montgomery itself, Orange County, you're just seeing that there's, these are revenues that even with a tax incentive, people think that they're not paying anything or we're writing them a check. And in fact, people believe that's absolutely not the case. With any project that comes before us, taxes never go down. We never write them a check, it's never what happens. They're just, a, a company can only come to us for benefits if they're going to improve a property to the point where the assessment will grow, go up and the taxes will go up considerably. All we do is phase in, gradually ease in those new taxes. That's really the incentive, what we do. Next slide, please. And, and this slide is a precursor to the next one, just talks about Article 18A, which is the general, the segment of the general municipal law that empowers IDAs to do what we do. And if we could skip to that, now just give you a quick run through. I always say it's quite simple really what our products or services are. And I, I hope I, and I'll try and slow down a little, make sure everyone understands this because I hope that you can help promote what we do as well. It's very, very simple. There are two sides to our agency. The first is the Orange County IDA that we're all familiar with. And then there's the Orange County Funding Corporation, which is technically called an LDC or Local Development Corporation, just more flexibility, a little more latitude with, with the OCFC. But the IDA is the agency that the New York State empowers to provide these incentives. And they're quite simple. I call it the three-legged stool. The first, if you would, sir, is sales tax exemption. In, in Orange County, we have sales tax rate of 8.125%. And in most cases, that applies to building materials, furniture, fixtures, equipment that goes into a project like this. They would have to pay 8.125%. We can exempt that, again, for the scope of their project, whatever the project is that they're bringing to us, usually in return for quality jobs, high number of quality jobs, we'll, we'll provide that. And we can save them on that. Again, building materials alone, you're talking significant savings. The next item, please, is mortgage recording tax. If you have a commercial mortgage for a piece of property or a project like those that come to us, you pay a mortgage recording tax of 1.05% of the principal that's being borrowed. We can exempt them that as well. And the last one, number three, this is the big McGill that I've been alluding to, the, the property tax abatement or pilot, which again, pilot means payment in lieu of taxes. In lieu of, instead of being assessed every year and, and that amount changing all the time, there is a payment schedule or a set, you know, number of payments and amounts year after year, which is essentially a tax abatement. And a tax abatement just means a phase in, as I mentioned. That is the one that is most valuable. In some cases, that's tens of millions of dollars that's being saved. Now usually, well, most always, our, our projects, if they're saving that much, even during the term of that pilot, when they're getting savings, they're paying tens of millions of dollars in taxes as well. Certainly, it's not like no taxes are being paid, but there are considerable savings. That's what this is all about. Next slide, please. On the other side of the house, OCFC, Orange County Funding Corporation. The main product that we are able to offer is issuing tax-exempt revenue bonds. And simply put, it really, this is a, a lower cost financing for certain projects. Typically, there's a finite group of, of organizations that are eligible for, to receive, to be issued tax-exempt revenue bonds. And they're typically large nonprofits, higher education, hospitals and such, and a couple of other small, specific groups. But we have, we've issued tax-free bonds to a number of projects. St. Luke's is one I think of all the time for the expansion of their emergency room. And they came to us for tax-exempt revenue bonds. Beyond that, just special programs, things that we could do. IDAs typically are not allowed to issue grants or loans. But during COVID, their special exception was given to IDAs around the state to either do a loan or grant fund. Other IDAs did grant funds for small businesses. Ours was a loan fund, COVID-19 Small Business Resiliency Loan Fund. We gave out about $500,000 in loans, roughly about 50,000 or $10,000 per loan. And it is a loan, we, we're expecting repayment with very little interest. And we've had 23 so far that have paid us in full, another 20-something that are paying us on time. We've only had three that have not paid at all, frankly. One of those went out of business, at least one of those, and a couple of us just haven't returned our call. I have to imagine they're struggling, so we understand that. But the intention was to be repaid, so we are seeking that. But it was a program that certainly helped at that time when people were just clamoring for it. They just needed a lifeline to help them get through a few months before they got PPP, whatever it might be. But again, we can only do those types of programs under special circumstances and when we're empowered by the state to do so. Next slide, please. Next, I'd like to talk about UTEP. It's important just so that people start to understand the rules or some of the parameters by which we, we must operate. Our UTEP is a uniform tax exemption policy. Every IDA is required to have one. They are expected to review them periodically and. They are expected to review them periodically and update them. The former administration at our IDA did update our UTEP in June of 2019. Basically, what, there must be, there are a few other things on there, if you could, please. Just let you skip right through those. As it says, it guides an IDA to approve incentives fairly and consistently. So essentially it spells out who gets what type, what level of incentives.
So not to interrupt, but when you and I spoke about this months ago.
Yeah.
So it's essentially a rubric. So when a project comes to you, you are constrained by what the rubric tells you you're allowed to. And that's the UTEP.
Correct, absolutely. And that's the whole idea. IDAs cannot act in a manner that is considered arbitrary and capricious, meaning you do one for one and something different for someone else. That's against the idea of, of, of the way the program was really first constructed by New York State. They want things to be evenly dulled out, no matter what it might be. Now we can be much more aggressive to a certain sector or type of business. And, and in the 2019 update to the UTEP that the former administration made, they did just that. They actually de-emphasized warehouse distribution. I believe that was a 10-year pilot, sometimes 15 years, and it was reduced to a six-year pilot. They also reduced hotels. They're down to a four-year pilot typically. And what they continued to emphasize at the same rate was manufacturing. Manufacturing jobs are usually more sustainable. They require greater skills, greater training, so that's usually higher pay. Again, more sustainable, meaning they, they tend to stay around for a while and don't just pick up and move somewhere else. I'm particularly interested in advanced manufacturing, anything kind of tech oriented. So I think you're going to see some of our current employers and valued businesses are going to be eroding as technology changes. You're going to see more automation even in distribution centers. I'm a big believer in self-driving vehicles. I pray for that for myself being on the road. I'm busy, I have a lot of work to do. I'd really rather be writing emails and things like that. But they're coming. Within 10, say 20 years, you're going to see even tractor trailers that are self-driving. So you're going to see, right now, there's a shortage of workers inside these distribution centers and truck drivers, and you're going to see the reverse soon. So we need to stay current. Our jobs, our employers, the sectors we're, we're focused in on need to be future ready and be able to provide quality employment for years to come. So.
That UTEP, it's a self-imposed policy for the county?
It is. It's required by the state, but it is authored by the individual IDA and updated ourselves based upon what we think are our priorities. So you're already hearing some things from me. Go ahead. Do you want to follow up on that?
So, well, and some of, you mentioned some of the other regions, Northeast Pennsylvania and some others. So do those areas also have the IDAs and do they also have the UTEPs?
I, I believe most like Lehigh Valley, Pennsylvania, I don't know of any IDAs there. They don't need IDAs because they have low, low-cost real estate and tax structures. Exactly, exactly. So, but around the state, if there are any IDAs and they're all over from Buffalo to, to Long Island, they all have UTEPs and they're all structured differently based upon what they want to draw to the area. What's important. Maybe some things are coming that are a dime a dozen. And, and other projects like some that I described, again, I'm, I'm not the only one seeking for chip fab or, you know, those types of projects that are going to be around higher yielding, higher paying jobs, higher taxes, you know, they can generate, you know, like us, some want to really prioritize those and provide the greater incentives for, for those types of projects. So you're going to see us review ours, as I mentioned, soon to make sure that this new board, new personalities, new kind of mindset and myself, I, I certainly have vision around this that I want to bring. You're going to see our UTEP be built so that it's starting to draw the types of projects we do want and de-incentivize those we don't. Mr. Brain?
Just sort of drifting off of that or drafting off of that. Is there any kind of oversight from either the state or the county as to the UTEP? Like are there parameters that have to be within it or is it totally up to the discretion of the IDA to?
It's a great question. I'm still in my rookie year until tomorrow, so I'll get you that answer, actually.
When you all renew your UTEP and re-explore and, and cast a new one, does it have to go somewhere for?
Sure. So everything is at the end of the presentation is, is, we're governed by the authorities budget office in New York State. Also in connection with the state comptroller's office. You may recall when the, with the, the issue we had at our IDA a year and a half ago, it was a joint investigation by the DA and the Office of State Comptroller. So they, they look at everything we do. We've report multiple times a year through a, a reporting system called PERS. It's all caps, an acronym, very closely watched. So all that does go to the ABO for, for review. And of course, our UTEP and everything else we do has to be within the confines of the law, the GML, the general municipal law that, that governs IDAs. But if there are certain subsets of what we can and can't do within that UTEP, I'm, I'm not entirely sure of that. I will research it. It's a great question. Really is.
I'd like to know the answer to that.
So again, you'll hear more about that. I think you'll expect that we'll, you'll, you should expect that we'll be reviewing and making updates to that. Ready for the next one. Thanks. That's it. Okay, very good. Next slide, please. Just some success stories. I probably mentioned a couple. Legoland New York, you may have heard of it. Even with the cuts, 1,100 jobs there. One thing I like to let people know about, first of all, the community benefit agreement they have with the town of Goshen, it was in this case, is very lucrative for the town. The schools are doing very well as a result. And just the jobs alone, we all think that it's just, you know, ticket takers. Not that there's such a thing really in, in that realm. Or, you know, people manning rides and things like that. There are certainly plenty of those jobs. But 500 of those 1,100 jobs, 500 are permanent, full-time, year-round jobs in marketing operations and such. People don't realize that. You have a high caliber employer, Merlin Entertainments with locations all over the world. Really great opportunities for young people and, and older alike to get in with that organization and move all, anywhere around the country, around the world. You may have seen an article, it was in the cover of the Times Herald Record this summer, where they had hired, I believe it was 150 NFA students. And I happen to live next door here in, in the city of Newburgh. And even while I worked on that project and you had Goshenites pushing, some of them pushing against the project, it's not what they, they foresaw for, for Goshen, I understand that. I was saying to myself, man, we would love to have it in Newburgh because what a boon it would be as a job creator. But it is a boon for us as well. They're providing transportation and they're bringing, you know, even young people from Newburgh. So that's a great one. MediaCom Communications Company, a cable company essentially. We retained them. They were threatening to leave, so they provided incentives to allow their, to help with their new headquarters in Blooming Grove that was built. Crystal Run Healthcare, they've been all over the county, of course, and the IDAs incentivize a number of their projects, more than 1,500 new and retained jobs. McKesson Pharmaceutical, now this is an example of the kinds of sectors that I think you've seen us become more invested in, I will say, in terms of, I consider even us saving companies, that's an investment in our part. We're giving up tax revenue, so it's an investment. But we've invested in the right types of sectors. Pharma, that's one of them. We have a number of pharmaceutical, right after McKesson came Amaro Source Bergen, another major pharmaceutical distributor that you see along near where the thruway is on 84. St. Luke's Hospital, I referred to this as well. Our, we issued tax exempt bonds to them to help finance their emergency room. Warwick Office and Technology at Corporate Park. Quick story. That was the former prison, Mid-Orange Correctional Facility in Warwick, in the town of Warwick. It was slated to be closed. Governor Cuomo announced that in 2010. And Michael Sweetin, who's the Warwick Town Supervisor, a very bright gentleman and visionary himself, he came to the IDA and said, I, I don't want to see this be a blight on the community, overgrown weeds and boarded up windows. Wanted to be an economic driver for the town and for the region. And we worked together and we actually just recently completed what I would say, you know, finished off that project. The IDA invested about $3.5 million to, in part, to make the land on the outside of the property shovel-ready for new development. We brought in water, sewer, natural gas, fiber optics, subbed out what we call pad sites, 10 shovel-ready pad sites for development. And we had a few things come and go there, meaning we're, that we were, we're looking to come. It didn't happen. Food manufacturing, which is up our alley as well. We do a lot with food and beverage manufacturing. Love that sector. But I think it worked out very well. We're actually doubled down on cannabis there. We have two major cannabis manufacturers. They received two of the first 10 licenses around the state for cannabis manufacturing, processing and dispensing. Two companies, Sativa and now Green Thumb Industries. Green Thumb, I just toured that construction site. It's, the building is now closed, 450,000 square feet built on the, again, the lawn outside of this former prison there. Going to create 200 jobs, many hundred thousand dollar jobs. It's life sciences. It's R and D. This is the type of, people can make their jokes about marijuana, but it is a big business and it's science and it's exactly the type of business we want to be in. So we actually, in addition to, to helping incentivize those, those major companies that are going to be big job producers, we helped fund the creation of a laboratory that will test both cannabis products, CBD hemp, that the idea was to be grown from local farmers here, help them bring a different type of crop. It would be processed here locally. We even have a small accelerator, kind of a business incubator, where we have two small companies that are working in CBD-related products. So we really have a cluster around, around cannabis and CBD that I think is a great investment. And because, by the way, it was a former prison, there was an economic development grant tied to this from New York State. The IDA recouped 3 million of the $3.5 million that we have invested there. And in addition to cannabis, it's not just pot out there. We have a major sports complex. We have a wonderful brewery. We have an adaptive sports field called The Beautiful People. And again, a small accelerator. So it is a bustling campus there. It's wonderful. And it's a park, by the way. The town residents walk their dogs. They put, they, you ride a kayak? What do you do? You navigate a kayak? You float a kayak? That's what I do. You paddle? You paddle your kayak? Yeah, exactly. In, in the lake that's there. So that's a great success story and frankly, one we want to replicate elsewhere around the county. So thanks for letting me breeze through that. And I mentioned the COVID-19 fund. Next slide, please. Last piece here. Thanks for, for the time. Just some myths. As the mayor said, there are, you know, more things that are misunderstood about IDAs than are understood. So I'm hoping that if you pick a thing or two up here tonight, it will be a, a victory for me. First one, please. I mentioned this, we don't write checks to applicants, either as loans or grants. It's not that. It's only revenue coming in and we only save them on that. But we don't write anyone checks outside of special programs like what we did in Warwick and the COVID-19 loan fund. Next, please. That is a myth. That's my fancy animation. That's as fancy as I get with PowerPoint. The next, when a pilot expires, so a pilot, again, I would say it's 10 years, 15 years. When that's over, a lot of people think, oh, well, they're just going to pick up and move somewhere else where they can get that next best deal. I always knock on wood, but I will tell you, that's never happened in Orange County. We've been very fortunate. We do have a lot to offer, of course. We're right in the middle of the Boston to Washington corridor. We're 60 minutes from the city. We have unmatched quality of life, all those great things. So companies, and they do, we, we have a very supportive business community from the county on down. So these companies are able to thrive here and they stay here. It's never happened where a pilot expires and they leave. And the end result is 10 or 15 years goes by pretty quickly, quite frankly. Not that we don't, you know, value any of the taxes that could or would be paid during that time, but once the pilot's up, they're paying full taxes forever. We just incentivized Royal Wine Company, Kosher Wine and Grape Juice, Ketum, manufacturer going to Goshen. And they will be paying by the end of their pilot, they're going to be paying over $4 million a year in taxes. And that is only going to go up, well, generally speaking, right? Taxes don't tend to go down. They could under special circumstances, but they don't. Special circumstances like a Legoland coming to town, but generally that's not the case. So that is, that's another myth. Next one, number three. Applicants who go through planning board approvals, they're clearly coming here anyway. This is an important one. I'd like to make sure everyone understands it. Cause I get this all the time that, hey, someone's going to, Royal Wine's coming to you, but I, I've been watching them through the planning board. They're going through all their approvals. They're, they're, they paid for engineers. They paid for a, a land use attorney. They're coming anyway. I, I totally understand that perception. And this is a bit of a, of a catch 22. It's a myth. You already gave it away. It's a myth. It, it's a bit of a catch 22 because actually in the general municipal law, companies are not allowed to even come to the IDA or actually rather, we're not allowed to award them benefits unless they've gotten a SECRE determination. And SECRE, for those that don't know, is State Environmental Quality Review Act. It is the very stringent environmental impact review that's required for construction projects, commercial projects like this. They, and, and they go through that process and they get a determination, a positive declaration that they're going to, in significantly impact the environment or a negative declaration that they don't. They get that through the end of usually planning boards who handle SECRE. So they have to go through that process and get a determination before they, they can get any incentives from us. But in doing so and going through that, again, we all have the perception that, hey, they're coming here anyway. So it's a real catch 22, but I think important for people to know that it's not just ones that are already getting approvals that we're asking to come to us. Next one, please. When a company receives a pilot, local taxpayers must then shoulder the remainder of unpaid property taxes. I hear this a lot. I hear elected officials talking about this. It is completely false. So I'm going to go to Royal Wine again. The land that they're building on was generating, say, $50,000 a year in property taxes, just, you know, fallow land there. When they build a factory there, 600,000 square foot factory, that one's going to be, again, the taxes will go up to $4 million. Now we're going to save them by them starting at not 50,000, but stepping up from there. And every, every year, they got a 15-year pilot as a manufacturer in food and beverage. It's going to step up till it gets to that 4 million point. What they are saving in terms of not paying for full boat of, of taxes, no one else is paying that. They're just unrealized property tax revenue that we're just, we're charging them less. But it's not like, hey, $4 million is the tax is what it should be or the full boat. And they're paying a million, so someone else, the rest of the constituents pay the, the remainder of the $3 million. That's not how it works at all. No one else shoulders anything additional. In, in fact, it's all new incremental property tax revenue that's adding to your tax base that is in fact potentially lowering, lowering each person's and each household's tax burden. So that's, that is a complete myth. Last one, please. The power of IDAs is unchecked and therefore out of control. And just going to my answer to you, Mr. Brain, yeah, that's certainly not the case. That's a myth. And if you could jump to the next slide as well, please. I think you got to click all those through, right? I mentioned all these, state comptroller's office. No problem. You can go back if you could. Authority, got to kind of skip through. Authorities Budget Office, again, that's, that's the office in New York State that, that specifically governs us on a, on a monthly basis. They audit us, all of that. State Comptrollers. PERS reporting is the means through which we not only report on the latest and greatest projects, but if a, a company has a 15-year pilot, we're reporting on how many jobs they've added and where they stand every single year. We're reporting on that. We go to the employer. They must send a certified payroll showing exactly who's, who's been at it. So we hold people accountable, as does the state. And we're checked all the time. I think that's it. Set my, my contact information, that, that's even my cell number. You can call me, you can text me. Happy to, to spend as much time as anyone needs to, to better understand this or answer any other questions.
Thank you, Bill. And I'll say this, we definitely went longer than we anticipated.
I apologize for that.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, yes, you went through it fast, but this is entirely what we need. Now, some people are going to ask, why do we need this in the village of Cornwall and Hudson? And here's the answer. We're part of a bigger community, the greater Cornwall community and not just 3,000 residents here with a small Hudson street that serves as our main street, but also part of the Cornwall community that's 16,000 residents and have more of an industrial base and, and more businesses and things like that. I wanted to make it clear at the beginning that we have, do we have any business before you, Bill?
No, I have not received an application for Cornwall and Hudson or for the town of Cornwall.
When I spoke to Bill about this, this was important. And I just want to go back to where Bill and I come from. I didn't know Bill, other than the fact that the two of us kind of crossed paths when I was the FBI chief and over Newburgh. Bill was working obviously on the economic development side of things with, with Orange County. We didn't know each other. When people reached out to me from various politicians' offices and asked me to sign onto a letter condemning the IDA, I decided to do some research. I got a C in economics at West Point. I'm not brilliant when it comes to numbers, but I wanted to understand what all this hue and cry was about. So what did I do? I picked up the phone. I called Mr. Fiavanti on his cell phone because I reached out to his office and they said, he's away on vacation, but he always takes calls. Bill didn't know me, didn't have my cell phone. I called him and I said, I need to understand this. And he goes, Jimmy, I know that everything that just blew up in the paper, people are calling us a borderline criminal organization. People are suggesting that we're stupid, we're doing this, we're giving money away, we're not taking care of people in Orange County. And he goes, I just want to help you understand this. Can I call you back in 20 minutes? Which he did. And we walked through a number of these things. And I thought this was appropriate. I was one of two elected officials in Orange County to call him and ask him about it. The letter comes out, obviously bashing the IDA. Again, Cornwall and Hudson may never, at least in my tenure here, may never have a project big enough or requiring the tax abatements that the IDA has. But I thought it was important that all of us, the elected officials up here and the citizenry here who can watch this on live stream or here tonight, to understand that. I have no dog in this fight. Nobody on this board does. I talked to each of the board members here and just said, I'd like Bill to come in and talk about this because I thought it was a great education. And Bill, with that said, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to give you one question, then I'm going to open up to the board.
Sure.
Many people have discussed the Rockland model. I don't understand the Rockland model, but they've suggested that the way Rockland County handles their IDA is better than how Orange County handles the IDA. Is that true?
So that was, you mentioned a letter and I won't go into great detail, but there was a letter put together and it purportedly had, I think, 26 local supervisors and mayor sign on behind, behind this. Now, when I spoke to most of them afterward, they had no idea what the letter was going to be about. They didn't know that it was going to reference Rockland County. And in this case, Rockland County happens to be the favorite IDA of some of our elected officials who hate pilots, who hate tax breaks. And by the way, if anyone doesn't like tax breaks, you think somebody gets too much, this one should get one, this one shouldn't. I'll talk to you about that all day long. I totally get that. I'm not a fool. I understand that some people don't have the appetite for tax breaks. I've tried to explain why we even need that, you know, what the case may be is. But so that I don't have a problem with. And as long as we're talking on a level playing field, I'll discuss any of that all day and I'll try and, you know, give my best defense. But I'll listen to anyone's argument as well. Rockland County is unusual. They're one of the only IDAs in the state that never was granted the power that we have to negotiate pilots. Actually, they're more of a conduit through which applicants come and negotiate directly with school districts in many cases on a pilot. Now, when I would share that information, because the article then said, we demand that you become like the Rockland IDA. So I'd call a supervisor, say, you know, you signed on to this. Do you know how the Rockland IDA works? And I explained that, that we, you just, applicants would come and negotiate directly with the school district. And to a person, they said, well, we don't want that. And I said, well, that's what you signed on to in this letter. That's what it actually, it stated. So I, so if you're against pilots or tax cuts of, tax breaks of any sort, you're going to love Rockland because they don't, they're not able to do that on their own. Others have to be empowered. However, part of the spirit that came through that letter that we're talking about mayor was the idea that local mayors and supervisors want to, maybe if they don't get the vote, because it really is, IDAs empower independent boards of directors. So they're not influenced by politics, whatever the case may be. Some politicians, our own Senator Scoofus, has sought to not allow, to prohibit local elected officials from serving on board. So they're not swayed by their own priorities. So, you know, I certainly understand that idea, but that's the idea of Rockland County is that it would take the power from us. So again, if you're against tax breaks, you're in favor of that. But every supervisor, and I spoke to over a dozen supervisors about this, especially those that I had relationships with that know they could call me. And I was a little surprised. Not that I'm against any sort of public, you know, decree like that, but I wanted to really understand it. And there was a lot of miscommunication and misinformation. And it was unfortunate how it came out, but it was based around the Rockland County model. And that would, it would just completely really, you know, make, it would make us impotent in terms of what we're here to do. And I, but again, to the point about locals having a say, I am all about having dialogue, if you can't tell. I like to talk with local elected officials, with constituents, whatever case may be. So I want to make sure that we get to a better place where we have communication. And, and by the way, that the article almost gave people the impression that, that we just do things on our own, we're rogue, we don't speak. Every project that's come before the IDA that I've been involved with, I've had lengthy conversations with whoever the local supervisor or mayor may be. That's the only way I would approach it. And their input weighs heavily. Sometimes the IDA does what they think is best despite one, what one or more people may say. But the input of the local municipalities is weighed very heavily.
Got it. Thank you. I'll open it up to any other trustee on the board that would have a question. Sir, trustee Brain.
I have a dozen that I won't ask you, but I'll happily call you and chat.
Please. It's been a long time since we had a cup of coffee. Absolutely.
Let me pick one. How many are on the board right now?
Seven. Our full, our board per the bylaws is seven, which I love that number. My wife has 30 on her board, so I.
Fully staffed right now?
Fully, we're absolutely full at seven.
And then I guess I'll, I'll ask a provocative question.
Sure.
The list of comparable prices for, or prices, comparable tax rates for other areas. We have the highest one in Montgomery. Why did Amazon choose us despite the fact that we have the highest price?
Well, they did get an incentive. They, they wouldn't have done it without an incentive. They were clear about that. They almost left, actually. It got very close because supervisor Brian Marr was really pushing it and trying to maximize that. And he scared the hell out of me, but he, you know, he did it very deftly because it did work out. But certainly there's advantage to being in our area, no question about it. They could go elsewhere. If they didn't get the right deal, then there are properties even within New York State, but outside of us, other IDAs. I know some of our, our local regional friends would like to have, you know, taken some of those projects. So it's a variety of factors, including what the amenities we do have to offer, but we can't close the deal without being in the range. It's like, you know, you may love a certain house, you want to be there and, and they're very friendly, the neighbors, but the price is just $30,000, you know, more than anything else you're considering. Well, if they could bring that down and it's in the range, you'd be willing to do it because of all the great, you know, amenities that house has to offer.
All right, I got to ask one more.
Sure.
Is there a danger of a race to the bottom if different counties have different IDAs, which might be, you know, more competitive? You know, do you end up, you know, is there a floor? And does, does it end up that if the competition's too fierce, somebody's going to lose out if they get the project?
Yeah, I've, I've heard that term, race to the bottom. I've typically heard it spoken to when talking about county IDAs like ours and counties like us that have local IDAs. Town of Montgomery IDA, Town of Walco has an IDA, the City of Newburgh, City of Middletown have IDAs. City of Port Jervis does, is not as active. And there's a lot of concern that, that applicants would be fee shopping, that they maybe come to us, but then they'd go to the town of Montgomery because their fees were lower. Well, I know there are laws that are, that are being banned, bills that are being bandied about to prevent that. I just don't think that's typical in the time that I've spent before the IDA where I promoted IDA benefits as a business attraction person, but didn't, you know, know the, the nuts and bolts behind it like I do now. I've never seen that be the case. I know there was something with Medline also talking to the town of Montgomery, but it wasn't just about fees. Typically, the way it works is if we have a, if a project's interested in a municipality in Orange County that has its own local IDA, they go there first. They either defer to us that IDA or they could decline them benefits and they could come to us. And I have, do not know of an example where a local IDA declined benefits, they came to us and we gave it to them. But under circumstances, that could happen. But just practically speaking, Mr. Brain, I'm not trying to, you know, kind of avoid the issue. It just doesn't happen, frankly. So I think some uniformity around fees would help so that there's just a safeguard against that. And I think we, I'm big on this idea of not leaving money on the table for our municipalities. That's how I tend to put it. So with reviewing our UTEP, with how we go about attracting businesses and closing them, I want to be as good as we can be. And I know we can be better. There's room for improvement, no question about it. I want us to be better, but it's a real gamble because, you know, you, if you don't put enough out there and, you know, it's kind of a game of chicken. You're tempting someone to leave. And I frankly, don't want to lose that game. When you do, when it's a great project, it hurts. It really does. And we've had projects where that's the case in the past. They didn't get what they wanted and it didn't happen. I like to close all these deals, as you can imagine. But again, at the same time, I want to be better and better and not leave money on the table for our municipalities.
I should stop, but I have one, just, I'll, I'll just say.
Go ahead.
When we speak, let's talk about small business as well and understanding how the IDA impacts.
I just, I'm going to comment on that quickly because I grew up in small business. My parents had small, but I really consider myself a small business person at heart. And I tend to think that small businesses get squat in New York State, frankly. I think there's very little, you can get a, an SBA loan, which sometimes is more work than it's, than it's worth. So the IDA did have, and unfortunately, this led to the scandal here with somebody trying to take advantage of us. We started an accelerator program, an incubator program, helping small businesses. And I called it a Robin Hood program because the money that comes to us, by the way, I haven't covered this. All of our funding comes from fees that we charge applicants for coming to us to apply for, for IDA benefits. No government funding, no nothing. Orange County gives us nothing, New York State gives us nothing. And this idea has done quite well. We incentivized a number of projects over the last 15 to 20 years. And we've accumulated a fund balance, a fund balance, pardon me, of over $10 million. And but they tend to come from larger applicants that pay these large fees, you know, the Legoland's and McKesson's and such. And the idea was taking some of that fund balance and helping small businesses through the accelerator program. I will tell you, I believed in that kind of program. I was intrigued with the very, the few different kind of cycles they had of that. Very few successes at all. Created, created very few jobs, cost a fortune, I can tell you right now. Us cutting the accelerator programs, we saved $2.3 million in expenses. Very, very costly for very little return. But I do believe in it and I'd love to find a way that the IDA helps support small businesses away in the future. Right now, quite frankly, I'm trying to advocate into the board to invest some of our fund balance in more traditional economic development types of investments. Like we're, we're just undertaking a shovel-ready initiative where we're working with an engineering firm to inventory the rest of the developable properties around the county and identifying some key properties that could help us bring those better projects here. Again, electric car manufacturers always kind of, you know, pinnacle for me. And we could identify sites where that would be great for a project like that. But maybe we need to make additional investments to enhance that site, to attract them. Those are things that's traditional economic development, a little easier for my board and elected officials to kind of get their arms around. So I'm trying to go with things that people are more comfortable with. Because when I say the word accelerator or incubator right now, people just, they, 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 you know, convulse because of the negative connotation around it.
Guys, we had time for one more.
I appreciate the time.
If I give it to Mr. Kane? No, no, no worries. They were all good questions, I think, that, that some of us were also thinking. Yep, absolutely. Mr. Kane.
It's actually not a question. It's really more of a comment. What I think, and Bill didn't have the time to get into it, but IDAs have been around, this is not a new concept. IDAs have been around in LDCs for 50 years, over 50 years. And while the, while the number of projects have slowly decreased, the, the value of the projects have increased. And the state comptroller, who does a very good job, Mr. Denapoli, we've actually had, we've been audited 10 years ago by the state comptroller's office. They do a solid job. They issue a report on, on IDAs and LDCs almost annually. So I think it's a, if anyone had any questions on it, you can see the comparables comparing Orange County IDA to the other IDAs in the, in the region. And we're comparable. New York City per capita is, is less what, what the net exemption, so to speak.
Right.
But the bottom line is that this is not a new concept. It's been around a long time. It's going to continue. We need it. And if you need to fill in the blanks that Bill doesn't have, couldn't present today, take a look at the report. I encourage you to look at it because you get a better snapshot of the whole pie and how this whole thing works.
Thank you, sir.
Bill, with that said, thank you. I didn't expect to go this long, but I.
I apologize. I appreciate the time.
Nope, it was an education for all of us and I appreciate you coming in, brother. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move into the meat of the meeting now. And we'll begin with public comment. Anybody wishes to speak, has an opportunity to do so, you can step to the mic and just state your name and your address. And we'll give you three minutes to speak. There will also be an opportunity at the end of the meeting to do the same. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay.
I think Bill has something to say.
I, I will say this about Bill. When I spoke to him tonight and I said, look, I don't want to back and forth. I want the board to ask you some questions, but this isn't a public forum for that. And Bill said, I'll handle anything that comes my way. And I appreciated that. But okay, absent hearing anybody that would like to speak now, you'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Let's move on to the next order of business, which is going to be the minutes. I'd like to make a motion to accept the October 24th, 2022 Business Meeting Minutes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I'd also like to make a motion to accept the November 1st, 2022 Special Meeting Minutes as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Nope, nothing. That's the next one, Bill. All right, so that's, that's 5:00 on that one. And then I'm going to make a motion to accept the November 14th, 2022 Special Meeting Minutes as presented with an abstention from trustee Brain. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, moving on. Our next order of business is the treasures report. We'll go through this pretty quickly, as quickly as I can do it. The Open Utility Balances Report for the end of October reads as follows. Village Water Sewer Garbage and Penalties, $451,217.11. Town Water and Penalties, $381,515.33. I'd like to make a motion to approve the November 2022 Warrant Number 11 and Authorized Payment, including prepayments totaling $507,188.66. May I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Revenue and Expenditure Reports by Funders Follows. The General Fund Revenue, $4,031,345.62, with expenditures of $2,755,884.89. The Water Fund Revenue, $1,955,692.2, expenditures of $1,862,613.22. And the Sewer Fund Revenue stands at $457,442.13, with expenditures of $297,058.11. For total receipts of $6,444,479.77, or 82.02% in anticipated revenues against $4,915,556.22, or 62.56% in anticipated expenditures through the end of October. The Sewer Capital Fund Balance is $519,153.24, including interest through October 31st. And finally, the amount collected in Village Taxes, Taxes and Penalties is $2,882,338.17 through the end of October, October 31st. And the collection period ended on the end of the month, October 31st. Unpaid taxes have been turned over to the Orange County Commission of Finance for collection. Moving on to Board Department Reports. The Building Department, trustee Cornwright.
Report for October 2022, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department. Building Permits Issued, eight. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued, eight. On-site inspections, 12. Complaint Inspections, three. Violations, zero. Stop Work Orders, zero. Municipal Searches, four. Solar Panels, zero. Fire Inspection, seven. Short-term Rental Inspections, three. Town of Cornwall Assists, zero. Manic Carmona Code Enforcement Office.
Senor Carmona, anything to add to that or anything that the board needs to know in regards to your report?
I'll report, but I did give you an updated fee schedule. Just keep in mind that I made a couple of changes.
Yes, sir. Have it right here. And Gene, we have that scheduled on here for, where are we? Okay, down into other business. God, we'll attack that in other business. Okay? All right. Thank you, sir. Moving on to the Fire Department, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, October 2022 Department Report with respect to Structures Fires. It was one event, one automatic, five automatic alarms, two hazardous conditions, five assist EMS, five fire prevention details, two community event details, two drills, two basic, excuse me, two rescue technician basic training, one large-scale battery incident training, two meetings, two work deals, details. Total events were 29 for a total volunteer hours of about 225. The chief notes that Boat 417 has been moved from its slip at the Cornwall Yacht Club and, and in service on its trailer at the fire station. Fire prevention lessons were provided to over 300 children by the volunteers of the Cornwall and Hudson Fire Department. And the New York Conference of Mayors Training has been scheduled for December 13th. And this training will, will cover the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Fire Commissioners and the relationship between the fire company and the village leadership. Submitted, Mike Trainer, chief. Thanks, Mike.
Chief, anything to add? Assistant Chief Quinn, anything to add?
Just an update on the boat. Since the report was issued, the boat's been winterized and it's out of service.
All right. And it's behind the fire company and it's going to ultimately be moved out to the DPW plot or parcel. Okay. And just for my edification, I know, I know we talked about this last week at the work session, but the elections for the fire company are coming up in December?
First weekend in December.
First weekend in December?
Wednesday in December.
All right. And then the new protocol for the villages, they will then be submitted to the Fire Commission, correct? For their weigh-in on that. And so the village board doesn't actually have to weigh in on that. We take the, we take the assessment of the Fire Commission. And if those, those elections stand by the Fire Commission, then they become solid in January. January 1?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. And thank you, Jeff Armadage and Rick Giampolo, who's in the audience right now, and trustee Rich Gaylord for handling that, the, the Fire Commission in, in doing that. That's good stuff. Okay. Moving on to the Police Department, trustee Brain.
Yes, the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department Monthly Report, October 1st through October 31st, 2022. There were 336 total calls for service. Nothing under felony crimes, fortunately, misdemeanors and violations. There was one call for harassment or aggravated harassment. There was one arrest for a misdemeanor. In terms of vehicle and traffic enforcement, there were four property damage accidents, four traffic summonses issued,[1723.61] four traffic summonses issued, six traffic warnings issued, four parking summonses issued, five traffic enforcement posts, two speed or radar sign postings. In noncriminal activity, there were six fire response calls, two domestic incidents, seven alarm response calls, one noise complaint, one suspicious vehicle call, three suspicious activity calls, four animal complaints, two disorderly adult calls. In terms of department assists, they assisted the Town of Cornwall PD eight times, EMS eight times, other police agencies twice, performed two welfare checks, and did seven citizen assists. And during the month of October 2,022, Cornwall and Hudson Police Department applied for approximately $6,000 in grant funding for body worn cameras through a grant opportunity with the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. By obtaining this grant funding, would allow the COHPD to purchase an additional six body worn cameras, allowing all COHPD officers to have their own individual departmental issued body worn cameras. During the month as well, the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department had all its marked patrol units relettered with new updated graphics on the vehicles. This was attained as a result of a donation from the Greater Cornwall Chamber of Commerce as part of the car show, as part of the proceeds from the car show. And that's respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
One of the things I think that I want to commend the the chief for on behalf of the board is the chief always does due diligence in making certain that he finds anything and everything available via grants, especially coming through New York State. And chief, we we definitely appreciate that in in helping supplement our budget. One of the things, because a couple of people asked me today that stopped by and said, wait a minute, I thought this board approved, you know, the police officers having body worn cameras a year and a half ago. And I said, that's true, but we purchased six, three for our full-time officers, one each, and then we have three that the part-time officers use but rotate through. And what the chief is trying to do is make certain that we have three full-time and nine part-time officers. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. And we want to make sure that every officer that works for this department has their own body worn camera. So I made a commitment to the chief, and I hope the board will help me back this up. But if we do not get this grant, we will figure out a way to build it into the budget. But I do want every police officer here to have their own body worn camera. And that's what we're going to look to do in this next budget year. Chief, anything else to add to Trustee Brain's report?
Just still then it came up with with the police chief vehicle as far as the necessary pairs have to just get passed through resolution when you guys get to it.
Yeah, we'll do that later down. Absolutely, you got it.
That's right.
All right, moving on. Department of Public Works. Before I throw it over to Trustee Carnwright, Dave Howerson, our DPW superintendent, was feeling a little under the weather and and stayed home tonight in abundance of caution. So he is not here tonight. So I'm going to throw it to Trustee Carnwright for the DPW report.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson, Department of Public Works, October 2,022. Trash collected for the month, 138.56 tons. Recycling collected for the month, 31.5 tons. Guard waste collected for the month, 100 yards. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties continues. Continued cleanup of Don Hume Farm property and prepped area moved tables from the park for movie night. Preparation of winter equipment for the season begins. Sweeping of streets, repairs and maintenance of village-owned vehicles. Fall bulk cleanup was completed the week of October 17. Notes, new fleet maintenance vehicle is at the dealer waiting for delivery of service body. New dump truck is in production with anticipated delivery summer of 2,023. Myself along with working leader Wayne Yeoman attended NICOM, a public works school, October 3 through 5. Dave Howerson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Trustees, any questions? All right, moving on. Water Department, Trustee Gaylord.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department, October 2,022 Monthly Report. 19,258,000 gallons worth of monthly production, giving you a daily average of 621,000 gallons. We collected 75 samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. Concerning treatment, the Black Rock Water Treatment Plant remains offline while the New York State DEC Speeds Permit is updated. 52 utility markouts were completed. Prepared to water main breaks at Maple Street and Canterbury Avenue. Leak repaired by a property owner at 282 Hudson Street. Water shut off at property owner's request, 79 Academy Avenue, 15 Mailer Avenue, 178 Hudson Street, 9 Andrews Street. New service installation at 6 Hickory Street. Prepare to fire hydrant valve on Deer Hill Road. Investigate a pressure complaint at 46 Deer Hill Road. Investigate dirty water complaint on Mountain Road Boulevard and First Street. Red commercial meters, red village residential meters. 18 final water meter readings were completed. 11 residential water meters were replaced. One transmitter replaced. Nine water meter inspections completed. Capital improvement. Chestnut Street Water Main Improvement Project has been completed. The new six-inch water main is in service with the old two- and four-inch water main disconnected and removed from service. I attended the NICOM Public Works School, October 3 through the 5. Sincerely, Michael Traynor, Water Superintendent.
Excellent. All right. Michael, anything to add to that?
Nothing.
All right. I know that you've heard about this in the Cornwall local or heard me talk about it in the mayor's message, but anybody that would like to take a look up close and personal to our infrastructure, mainly the water pipes. I have a section cut out from 1895, a section cut out from 1927, and two sections from 1955 that are in the work session room. And you are welcome to stop in here anytime you see the Jeep out front or other times and just ask to take a look at them. But they are in the work session room, and it's a real eye-opener as we move forward on critical infrastructure repairs on just the vast majority of our piping system and what needs to be repaired and replaced. So I asked Michael and his intrepid group of Water Department employees to cut me those sections so that residents could come in and take a look at it. So take me up on that offer. All right, moving on. New Windsor Cornwall EMS, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Sure, okay. The report from the New Windsor EMS for November, as of November 1, 2022, with respect to personnel, they had interviews held for a full-time position. One new part-time paramedic was hired. One medic was out on injury, not work-related. Christine Kowski was a paramedic, attended New York State EMS Conference. With respect to operations, there were 356 total response responses for service, 252 responses in New Windsor, 66 responses in the Town of Cornwall, and 15 in the village. With respect to mutual aid, there were 11 to the Town of Newburgh, two to the City of Newburgh, four to Woodbury. The Cornwall unit covered that. Five Highland Falls that were also covered by the Cornwall unit, and one to Montgomery. With respect to average response times, so it was 7 minutes 15 seconds in New Windsor, 7 minutes 5 seconds in Cornwall, and the average response time in Cornwall and Hudson was 7 minutes 11 seconds. New Windsor units have responded to seven-second calls in Cornwall, while the Cornwall unit has responded 13 times to third calls in New Windsor. So far for the year, there were 3,114 calls. There are no calls for service, so no calls for service went uncovered in New Windsor and Cornwall. There are no vehicle accidents. Drive drive cameras are on are in all ambulances. New ambulance arrive yet cannot take delivery until they obtain the funding. Last last thing noted by the chief is that there are funding short, there's a funding shortage, and this was related to the town supervisor in New Windsor, and increased costs have reduced cash on hand. And they've met met as a board to review the cost and budget requests. All requested documents were provided to the Town Comptroller for review for an increase in New Windsor funding. And that's it, from Chief Michael Big.
Understanding that we have a three-year contract with New Windsor Volunteer Ambulance Corps. We decided on three years because one year is not long enough, and five years would have been too long, and we wanted to make sure that things were working. So we have thus far to date, I think, as we're moving into our fifth or sixth month now with Cornwall EMS being stood up. I think the most important line that the deputy mayor read was, for the month of October, no calls for service, one uncovered in New Windsor and Cornwall, the greater Cornwall area. And that's really the standard that the town supervisor and I have for our ambulance corps. On Wednesday morning, the town supervisor and myself are going to meet with Chief Michael Big and with Karen Edelman Reyes. Karen is the Cornwall representative on the New Windsor Board, just to discuss things going forward and just to meet as a as a foursome. And I will brief back to this board what what issues were raised and and what the solutions or potential solutions would be.
Do you know what the shortfall is for the ambulance?
I don't. I did speak with Supervisor Myers the other day, and this did not come up. But I can guarantee you, after reading that this afternoon, I will talk to him and figure out what that is. But we have a negotiated three-year deal, so my understanding is that we'll be honored, that will be honored for the duration of the contract. Okay, moving on. Resolutions. Setting setting a time and place for a public hearing on a proposed local law to override the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law Section 3C. I'm going to introduce the following resolution. I'm going to ask this board to support me in its adoption. Whereas the village board is mindful that prudent fiscal decisions are one of the mainstays of good government, the village board is also mindful that certain essential services must be provided to the residents of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson. The village board desires to have the flexibility to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing in 2,023 that exceeds the real property tax levy limit as defined by General Municipal Law Section 3-C, if necessary, to provide essential services. And whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to consider overriding overriding the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law Section 3-C, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village board hereby determines that it will be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law, the project, as it in quotations, in accord with New York State Environmental Quality Review Act or SEAKER in Part 617 of the Regulations Implementing SEAKER, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and let it be further resolved that the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SEAKER, and let it be further resolved that a public hearing be held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law to override the tax levy limit established in the General Municipal Law Section 3-C, and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accord with SEAKER on December 19, 2,022, at 7:01 PM at Village Hall located here, 325 Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, 12520. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. And I am going to seek a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I'm going to report that in 2,023, the village's tax base growth factor is 1.0063%, 1.0063%. All right, moving on. Next issue, Riverfest 2,023. I had the pleasure of dining with the deputy town supervisor, Mr. Win Gold, at the Winterfest or whatever we're calling it now, Winter Wonderland. Mike, what are we calling it now? Winter Wonderland, whatever it is. All right. At Leo's tonight, and he mentioned to me that Riverfest is looking to come back again next year, bigger than better than they've done every year in the past, and they've done a great job. So I'm going to make a motion granting approval to hold the 26th Annual Riverfest Celebration on Sunday, June 4, 2,023. May I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ethics Board Appointments. Okay, so a little background on this. Mike Farrar, who had served for a long time as the Ethics Board Chairman, regrettably has to step down. We thank Mike for his service. I think we did that last month, right, Gene? We accepted his tendering his resignation. And I met personally with Mr. John Ross, who's been a member of the Ethics Board for a number of years. John is a distinguished professor emeritus at NYU in philosophy. Retired a number of years ago and has graciously agreed to step up and assume the helm as the chairman of the Ethics Board. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint John Ross, the chairman of the Ethics Board, for a term expiring on April 3 of 2,023. So obviously, we'll have to reappoint him. Subject to him being sworn in within 30 days of this appointment, he'll have to come in and see the village clerk, and I know he's watching tonight, so he'll he'll hear this. And may I get a second for that appointment? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Once again, I'm going to thank Mr. Ross for taking that helm on. That's this is a thankless job and and not a sexy one, but truly appreciate it. And we truly appreciate Mike Farrar, who's been a member of the Ethics Board since 2,013. So he had a good run, nine years. So, all right. And one of the main jobs of the Ethics Board is to review the disclosure forms that are submitted by all village employees and all village elected officials, and to ensure that if a citizen brings a complaint that somebody on the dais is taking petty cash or doing something they're not supposed to, this is the body that handles that and oversees this. So a very important body. Okay. I'd also, and I spoke with each of the trustees sitting up here tonight before this appointment, I'd like to appoint Brandy Schaefer McLendon to the Ethics Board for a term expiring on April 7 of 2,025, subject to her being sworn in within 30 days of this appointment by the village clerk. I spoke to Ms. McLendon. She graciously agreed to be part of this August body. And so I will seek a second for her appointment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to the annual supply bids. The village clerk slash treasurer, Gene Mahoney, has reported that a bid opening was held in the village office on November 10 of 2,022. As thus, water treatment chemicals. Bids received from Surpass Chemical Corporation and Slack Chemical Company Incorporated. I'd like to make a make a motion to award the bid to Slack Chemical Company Incorporated, the low bidder in the amounts received November 10 of 2,022. 2,022. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just a question. Are these, I see the increase over 2,021 amounts. Is that just commensurate with market rate? It's they both seem to have gone up about the same.
Good question.
All right, so it's just the cost of the chemicals. Thanks.
All right, any further discussion?
Are those for three out of the four? Because I've seen the other one is the aluminum sulfate. Is that that's going to surpass?
No, the board has the authority to.
Award all four to, I got it. Okay, I understand. Got it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Off-road diesel. Mirabido Energy Products was the sole bidder. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to award the bid to Mirabido Energy Products, the sole bidder in the amounts received November 10 of 2,022. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And and alum.
It's Mirabido.
Oh, is it?
You haven't heard the commercial yet?
I haven't. All right, well, I'm embarrassed.
Right, Joe?
Joe's nodding his head in shame, just going, he butchered it.
Jim, you're the only one who who.
Who called it Mirabido?
Everyone says Mirabido.
All right, good.
That's why they have the commercial.
All right, this one should be easier, easier. Alum Sludge Removal Services, Tam Enterprises, was the sole bidder. So I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Tam Enterprises, the low bidder, as per the November 10, 2,022 bid. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, why is that one so much higher? It's removal services of Alan Sludge. They're not selling it to us.
They got to take that down in New Jersey. So they got to increase the fuel cost.
That's nothing compared to the the off-road diesel. That doubled from 286 to 554.
Yeah.
48, excuse me.
And unfortunately, that that's not available on state contract.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye. Okay. Water Commission Appointments. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Town of Cornwall. Well, before I do this. So one of the things that we've had a long conversation with between the village board and with the Water Department and our Water Superintendent and with the Town Council and the Town Supervisor is the water, we're calling it committee?
Committee.
I'm sorry. So, Gene, we got to adjust that to committee, not a, Joe does not like commission or authority. So he wants it to be a committee.
Committee.
So I stand corrected, a water committee. From this board, we're going to, so the way this committee is going to be set up, it's going to begin meeting in January. It's going to have four months to meet, and it will deliver a a assessment of prospectus, whatever you want to call it, on May 1 to the village board. Um, it may not be complete, but at least it'll give us a rough framework. We believe during that time, we will also have the master plan that we have paid for and that the engineers are gonna deliver on the water system. So the way we wanted to set this, this, I'm sorry, not commission, Committee up is obviously we don't want to have anybody usurp the authority of the Water Superintendent. He will be the chair. There will be one member from this body, the village board, an elected member. There'll be one citizen that the board has agreed to, resident of the village of Cornwall and Hudson. There will be one member, an elected member from the Town Council and one member of the Cornwall, the Town of Cornwall, um, a resident. Um, so going forward, this board has decided on Deputy Mayor Jim Kane to represent our elected body. Um, this board has elected to propose Eric Danega, um, who lives on Bayview and currently serves as the, uh, Department of Public, Orange County Department of Public Works Supervisor Superintendent?
The Commissioner.
Yeah, the Commissioner, I guess, yeah, it's more fancy than that. Um, from the Town Council, um, Councilman-elect Tim McCarty is going to serve, um, at the behest of the Town Council. And, um, Ms. Carla Castillo, who is the Chair of the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council. Um, so we're blessed to have these four supremely talented people join our talented Water Superintendent. So without further ado, Michael set up the meetings. Mike will do all the coordination. They will meet as many times in that four-month period as they elect to meet. So it's, it's on the Committee to set that up and then to provide their report here. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Town of Cornwall Councilmember-elect Tim McCarty and Town Residential Ratepayer Carla Castillo to the Water Commission. May I have a second?
Committee.
I'm sorry.
I'll amend that motion to say Water Committee.
Water Committee. Got it. All right.
Second.
May I have a second? Any further discussion?
Um, just, um, did, did they have, um, support available to them? Is there engineering support available to them?
Does who?
The Committee.
Engineering support, uh, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we can contact our engineers we had. I would, yeah, I expected to have them coming to at least one meeting and and Joe as well.
Mike, Mike and I have already started to discuss some. Mike and I have already started to discuss some of the items that will be brought up. One of the issues is going to be water usage rates, and it's one of the things that we discussed at length this morning. And that will be something that will be addressed by the Water Committee. They will look at that. They will figure out what makes the most sense going forward on how to do this, as long as we stay within the confines of our current code or change the code. Um, and then to figure out how to proceed forward. So that's the plan. All right, um, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Did we take, you didn't take the vote?
We have the first and second.
We have. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. I'd like to make an, um, a motion to appoint Village, uh, the Deputy Mayor James P. Kane and Village Residential Ratepayer Eric Danega to the Water Committee. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? You obviously have to abstain. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I abstain.
Yes. All right. Authorized posting of water maintenance worker position for the Water Department. Upon the recommendation of Water Superintendent Trainer, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the Water Superintendent to post an open water maintenance worker position in the Water Department, which Mike has held in abeyance for some time now, working one man or woman down in the department. May I have a second?
Second.
Mike, any further discussion? Anything the trustees should know?
No, thank you.
Okay, trustees, uh, any further discussion?
It's a, it's a position that exists on the county list.
Yes, sir. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Winter Wonderland Joint Committees Holiday Tree Lightings Event, allocations of a thousand.
Um, what's the money for?
All right, so one of the things now, I went to the meeting tonight. I guess they've had four or five meetings thus far, but we have to understand that there are a number of committees working together, and it's like herding cats. You have the Main Street Committee, which works out of the town, the Town's Rec Department, the Village's Special Events Committee. You have the new New Year's Eve Ball Drop Committee in the village. You have Storm King Engine Two, Hudson Highland Engine One, Michael, who am I leaving out? Oh, my wife's, I, that's a big one. I know, the Cornwall Youth Committee, which is underneath the umbrella of the Rec Department in the town. Lot of moving parts, lot of people with good ideas. I was glad to say my hellos there and get out of there because you think this is herding cats? But they are looking for some seed money, um, the town, and I spoke to the supervisor today, and we both agreed that we would, um, that we would attempt to ask our, our duly elected bodies to kick in a thousand dollars each. You asked what for? They're building floats. They're gonna have a snow machine. They're going to do decorations. Um, two of the things in talking to the, our police chiefs and to our fire chiefs, um, there was a concern about doing a parade at night. This is something the Independent State Committee has done for eighty-something years in Cornwall, but it's during broad daylight hours. This would take it to another level. We've agreed, um, meaning the supervisor, myself, with consultation from our two police chiefs and the fire chief, that we would limit this. It's not gonna be called a parade, which raises it to another level. It's going to be a caravan. And the caravan is going to consist of public safety vehicles, fire trucks, um, police vehicles, EMS vehicles, and three floats only. They're gonna have a Snow Queen float. That, that's gonna be a Phyllis Murphy thing, and you have to have that. There's gonna be a Cornwall Youth Committee float, and there's going to be a New Year's Eve Ball Drop Committee float. Apparently what they wanna do is try to get a lot of excitement going because, um, the Yonones who own the building where the Storm King Theater is are really going to, they're kind of chairing this event force and really wanna kind of build up some buzz. So those are the three vehicles that will be essentially floats with the public safety vehicles. So they're asking for a thousand. I always look at Gene and I see her eyes roll back in her head as soon as I say, this wasn't budgeted, but can we get this money? So it's on the list here. Um, I have written the check before I got board approval, as did the supervisor, but I am seeking for the board to approve this as seed money. Going forward, there will be a budget line for this. It'll probably be a sub-budget line underneath the Special Events Committee in the, in the village. So without further ado, I'd like to make a motion allocating one thousand dollars from the village's general fund expenditure line, Alpha seven five five zero point four to the Special Events Committee, cause I asked Gene today. She said, who do you want the check made out to? And I said, cash, and she glared at me. So it's going to be made out to the Special Events Committee, and that's where it'll go to defer costs associated with, quote, Winter Wonderland, close quote, which is what these committees have agreed to call this. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion or concerns?
Gene?
Uh-oh.
Sir?
You're okay with this?
How do you describe okay?
I take the fifth.
Just out of curiosity, when you said there's gonna be a budget line for it.
Yes.
Moving forward. You mean in the twenty twenty-three budget? Or do you mean?
In the twenty twenty-three budget, and I've already spoken to the Special Events Committee, we're going to look at a lot of these things that we run through that Special Events Committee and make sure that money is set aside for that. Last year, the board did something unprecedented and bequeathed or gifted sixteen thousand dollars toward the purchase of the blow-up screen. So we did not do what we normally would have done, which was set aside money to give the Special Events Committee. This year, we will probably build in some, I don't know what the value will be, but I'll come to you guys and say, this is what we think we should put, put toward that.
But for this year, for this holiday, it'll be just, um, it'll go against Gene's typically pervert.
Right.
Budgeted, pre-budgeted, but next year we'll budget.
And, and Jim, we didn't gift anything to anyone. We transferred funds to a entity that is run by our village, and it's our.
We didn't bequeath it either, did we?
No, it's not a funds transfer either. It is.
No, it's kind, it's similar to the village's allocation of money annually to River Fest.
Right.
It's, it's a similar.
And fourth.
It's a village event.
It's a village event that will take place in part in the village.
Okay, well, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, moving on to the next item. Donnie U Farm Roof Replacement Project. Boy, this is another one of the gifts that keep on giving, just like the composting toilets. Um, I'm gonna ask for authorization to sign an agreement with One Time Carpentry LLC. Um, so I'm gonna need you to do this. Can you make this motion?
Yeah, uh, make a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a roofing services agreement with One Time Carpentry LLC to replace the barn roof at Donnie U Farm. May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Has it started?
No.
Was it supposed to start on November sixth?
Yes, but we didn't have an agreement.
I just happen to know that.
And this is the details of it, correct? So this is gonna be as per document?
I hope they get it.
Gene, as per documents?
Okay.
So just, uh, I might as well just point some of this out then. Um, the contract is for the sum of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and two dollars. Um, and, let's see, what else?
Well, essentially, I can.
Go ahead, Jim.
Joe, yeah. So there's just, there was a little bit of a, a gap, right? So this company was the successful bidder for the Orange County RFB, uh, for roofing services. One of the terms of the contract award to this company was that, uh, they could perform the same work for other municipalities, government entities, districts, et cetera, at the, under the same terms and conditions that the county let their contract. So they have a contract with the county, and they gave us a proposal. But now this kind of puts everything together. This agreement says, states the amount, and states that they are gonna perform the work under all the same terms and conditions as is required by their contract with the county. So for instance, they have to pay the, the proper state wages. They have to keep the proper records. They have to have the proper insurance. So that's what that document says.
Okay, so the, the motion is to authorize the mayor to sign this roofing services agreement with one time. One time Carpentry LLC. So, um, I already got a, I got a second. Uh, all in favor? Oh, any other, any, excuse me, any other comments?
Just, uh, a point of procedure. I think we, we've been down this road before, but I believe authorizing the mayor to sign a contract does not mean that the mayor is not allowed to.
Correct.
Read or vote on the.
Right.
Resolution before.
And he could, and he could make the motion too, but I, it's a matter of how, however, however you're comfortable.
Counsel him on this. He doesn't like to take my counsel.
All right, all right, all right.
He just likes you to read the motions once in a while.
Exactly. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's five oh, Gene. All right, next item of business is to authorize emergency repairs to the chief's police vehicle. Um, before I do this, um, Chief, you wanna give just a quick, I know you've already talked, you've already, we've done this through email, but you wanna kind of give the board a quick snapshot of what happened and what we're looking to do in regards to the repairs?
Yeah, um, the past week I started noticing, uh, problems with my vehicle. And actually, one day when I was coming to work last week, um, the vehicle just, uh, slipped out of gear and wouldn't go. So I was lucky enough to pull off to the side of the road, and the car wouldn't go into drive, wouldn't go into reverse. I put it into park, started it a couple of times. Luckily, I was fortunate enough to get it back in gear. I immediately brought it down to the highway mechanic. He looked it over. Um, there was nothing that, uh, he could do to remedy it. Uh, he made an appointment with Healy Chevrolet, who handles our account. And, uh, he was able to give me an appointment the next morning to drop the vehicle off. I subsequently got a call following Friday of last week, and I was given the, the bad news that the transmission and some other mechanical issues needed to be repaired. So obviously I reached out to, to the five of you because I had to, um, speak with the, uh, sales, uh, service consultant just to get the ball rolling as far as ordering parts, cause it's gonna take at least a week, maybe more, cause of a holiday next week to get the parts. And then it could take another week and ten days to get the vehicle repaired, as they have several transmissions and, uh, ahead of my, uh, service.
Chief, year of the vehicle?
Nah, it's a two thousand seventeen Chevy. Eighty-two thousand.
Eighty-two thousand. Okay.
Warranty just ran out.
Yeah, April.
It always, that's the way it all, that's the way it always works. All right, so let me make the motion authorizing the expenditure of seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents to Healy Chevrolet to replace the transmission and remake, and make repairs to the chief's vehicle as per the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two estimate. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jimmy, I'm gonna turn this over to you. The next item is gonna be the approval use of the third-floor apartment at Three River Avenue as an accessory office space to Pepatini Restaurant. You wanna give any background on that?
Yeah, um, actually, you know, Manny can do it as the code enforcement, um, officer, and him and I have been in discussions about it as well as Joe McKay.
So explain what we're doing, what, what we're, what we're allowing or what we're making a motion for, Manny?
There was an application to use not the third-floor apartment, but the third floor.
Space, third-floor space. Don't call it an apartment. Over Pepatini's, yeah, but it's the third floor. So Pepatini's on the first, there's a second-floor apartment.
Then it's the attic.
And then it's the attic, which is the third-floor space. Okay.
The application came in to turn that space into office space, but due to the zoning requirement there, it's not permitted, so that we had to go to bearings and, and so many other issues. Uh, the owner approached me saying that he's not using that space as an office space per se, rather for an accessory space for the business of the restaurant, like a place where he can do his paperwork for the restaurant itself. Uh, so my suggestion to the board and to the applicants was to come before you and request a special permit through a some type of agreement to where we're gonna allow him to use that space as an accessory use for the restaurant and the restaurant only. Not a variance, not for him to rent it out, not to use it as a, as a separate business, only for the restaurant while the restaurant is there. If the restaurant changes hands or the property changes hands, this permit, this agreement then is void.
Okay, all right, any, uh, well, let me go ahead and make the motion first. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the use of the third-floor apartment at Three River.
Not a part, third-floor space. It's a committee, not a commission.
The third floor.
I am gonna make a motion to approve the use of the third-floor space at Three River Avenue as accessory office space to Pepatini Restaurant. This approval will cease upon the sale of the lot or upon the sale of the restaurant unless and until transfer of ownership of the lot or transfer of ownership of the restaurant is one in which a current owner or owner, owners retains fifty-one percent ownership interest in the new entity. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, just, just my information. You're not constraining, it wouldn't constrain the activity there to be, every piece of paper has to relate to only the business of the restaurant, right? I mean, what's?
That's a Manny question.
Understood, but as you say, it can't be rented out to a separate.
That is correct. It cannot be.
Okay, understood.
Okay, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, other business, Donnie U Farm Steering Committee. Now we get into the good stuff. Um, Trustee Brain, I will turn this over to you.
All right, um, the, uh, the committee met, uh, last Tuesday the fifteenth in the boardroom. Uh, no, this is the boardroom, in the, uh, conference room, and, um, discussed their current, uh, current business and the status of their project. So, uh, a couple of things that, uh, Deek Hazirjian is, he's sort of, uh, captaining the creation of the community garden along with Cara Melling, Cara Gelardo. Uh, and there, he needs, he, uh, had indicated he's gonna reach out to Dave Halverson to talk through, um, there's an invitation only request to arborists to, uh, donate woodshits for mulch. Um, and so he's gonna confirm with Dave Halverson the location for that, uh, and the process behind delivering those and associated signage. He is also going to coordinate with Dave Halverson and with, uh, the Clerk Mahoney regarding the, uh, potential ordering of fencing supplies from a dealer that, um, where, where they would be able to get a rate. That is, the rate that would be offered to the village as well. I'm not sure if any of, if that happened, but in any case, they're looking to get a fence put in as soon as possible. They received a, um, well, the board received a permit application for a wedding, uh, to be held in August of next year. The committee indicated they were going to send, uh, a short description of their recommendation, but they fully approved the idea of having a wedding as a pilot test of a, you know, sort of rental fee for the, uh, for the property with a kind of, uh, excuse me. I think the profile of the event will be somewhat similar to the fundraiser that was held, essentially. Uh, roughly the same amount of time, roughly the same, well, a smaller number of people. Food trucks and a bar. They would get all the appropriate, um, permissions and permits. Totally want to talk. So they were fully in favor and they're. Totally want to talk. So they were fully in favor, and they're gonna write a recommendation as to the actual fee. Phyllis, Phyllis Murphy is helping to plan it with the applicants.
Have a drink, though. You all right, brother? You want me to go on to something else and come back to you?
Just gotta get some water.
All right. All right, we'll come back to Donahue Farms. We still gotta talk about the garden fund. Let's move on to the, Bill's doing that. Let's move on to the compilation audit of village financial statements for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. I'm gonna report that Nugent and Hauser, the auditors for the village, recently completed a compilation audit of the village's financial statements for fiscal year 2021, 2022. A meeting with the mayor, myself, the village treasurer, Ms. Mahoney, and auditor Justin Wood has been scheduled for December second to discuss the report's findings. Approval of 2022 fee schedule and additional updates. I have here in my hand the permit fee schedule that the code enforcement officer, building inspector, and the deputy mayor have gone through the fine-tooth, oh, I'm sorry, and the attorney for the village have gone through the fine-tooth cone. We have shared this with each of the trustees, and I think that where we stand right now, Jim, do you wanna help me out here? It's not ready for adoption this year. It's gonna be placed on, I'm sorry?
It should be month.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm sorry?
It should say adoption this month.
Is not ready for thi, this month, right, not this year. But it will be placed on the December meeting agenda for acceptance. Again, if anybody, any trustees has issues with this, please, let us know soon.
Has, has there, you know, let me just ask a question. So Manny, in your, when we lent you to the town on occasions, did you ever have a chance to discuss this with Diane or any, any of the people? Has this been any, has there been any compilation, you know, versus the town rates?
Okay, so we've, that's, that's what you hear on the street a lot, you know, like, wow, how come I pay this and they only pay this in the town? So there was a couple that theirs were higher, ours were lower, ours were higher, theirs were lower. So I just wondered, because that's generally what you...
If I may add, you should look at it this way, fiscal or municipality-based, you can't really compare one to the other, because in order to get a true fiscal that is fair to everybody, you gotta take how much money comes into the municipality or building permit fee, and every municipality gets a different amount. There is a formula that you use to calculate that and come out with your fiscal. So yes, you wanna be similar to other municipalities, but you're never gonna be identical, or you shouldn't be, in my opinion.
Yeah. I mean, our only thing is explaining to somebody when they go, why are you charging one seventy-five and the, the town is charging a hundred? Just being able to have that argument for, we charge that much here because of this. And that's the thing. We just don't wanna be out of whack. That's the whole point here. We know that there'll be some slight different...
And we know they were out of whack because they haven't been done in a long time.
Yep, you got it.
And Manny provided, this was at least a couple of months ago, he provided us what the, what the town rate was, and that's the one that's in red. I mean, I don't wanna add more to your plate. I could say, hey, you know, put the town one on this one. I like what you did here, just made it easier to, to read.
Yeah, I like that the one, the final one to be just our fees, not like we had it in the past, which was last year against your, create confusion. Yeah, with that one, look at everything else, and then, you know, decide what's best for the village. But at the end, we should be with just the village fee out here.
Billy, that formula that, when you, when you discussed it with Joe and I, that's, that's the standard formula that's how it's supposed to use, right? And you're gonna come up with a fee?
It's not mandatory to be used. It's, it's a suggestion by the International Code Council.
Okay.
They base it on a national average, and that's how they come up with a formula.
All right, moving on to the Cornwall Yacht Club. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Are we going to adopt this?
We're not doing it tonight. We're doing it next month.
I have one question for you on the fee schedule.
Okay.
Just, throughout, is this a draft that I did change the format that I presented before? I think this is a lot easier for all of us to read. I did it really quickly today, and I just went through it. There's a couple of glitches that need to be changed. So just review it as a draft and not make the changes before we go file.
Okay. All right, moving on to the Cornwall Yacht Club. Counselor, this will be your time to shine, because I'm just gonna report that last week, our code enforcement officer, Mr. Carmona, and the village board agreed to table further discussion, I'm sorry, to table further enforcement action down at the yacht club until December thirty-first to provide additional time for discussion between council, correct?
Correct.
Is that fair?
Correct. And this is really the code enforcement officers bailiwick, so to speak. But we got a request for additional information. Clerk is looking to see if we have the information that the yacht club is looking for. The attorney for the yacht club has, has agreed to send me whatever information he has to support his argument. It's gonna take a little while, so at least for now, I asked the code enforcement officer, he agreed it was reasonable to set December thirty-first as, as a deadline. I don't know how long it's gonna take for us to actually find, even if we have it. I don't know how long it's gonna take to find it and get it over there. So it could be that that December thirty-first date becomes, I don't know, January thirty-first. But I think the point is, as long as we're talking, as long as we're exchanging information, it's appropriate.
And I think we can say this in public. You have shared with council for the yacht club what you and your law firm, the research that you have done, which included your legal research, as well as looking at surveys and things like that, and, and gave them that. So they, they have that, right? They have what our position or standing is, correct?
That's what we shouldn't talk about in public. No, I'm kidding. Yes, that's correct.
What did I say that went outside the white lines? I mean, you, okay, got it.
It's fine. We're talking. Yeah, we sent them, listen.
You don't want me to say in detail?
No, it's all fine. It's all fine. We wanna try to, listen, we wanna resolve this with the yacht club. We have to have open communication. I expect that these deadlines will get extended. We don't have an alternative. We need to come to some kind of understanding as to what the legal rights are.
Got it.
And I've said a hundred times, just kinda tell me why I'm wrong.
We can say they have our position. You are looking into some more things that you have to get with the village clerk to attempt to locate, to provide to them. Okay.
Correct.
Got it.
And we'll go from there.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Water usage rates. So at the work session, we discussed this as a village board. I presented a spreadsheet that the village clerk and treasurer had provided to me that showed what the percentage rates were that the town and the village were paying. Our village code, which dates back to the seventies, requires town residents to pay eighty percent over the top of what the village does over the years. And that means going back to the early seventies, that number has been, you know, changed to seventy-nine percent, to seventy percent, to fifty-two percent, to thirty-six percent, to where it is now, where it currently stands at thirty-three percent. So one of the things that should happen is, we should either be charging eighty percent to the town residents over the top, or the code should have been changed, and it hasn't. So in speaking with the water superintendent this morning, and in speaking with the board last Monday, we've made the determination that we have set up a water committee, and we believe that the water committee is the first place where this matter will be and should be discussed. And we'll time that with the, Mike, what are we calling again? The, the master plan or the, the water, water master plan from?
Yeah, the master plan, the first draft that should be available within the next thirty days.
That's awesome. All right. So we're just gonna put things on a pause right now. So if this gets delayed too much, we won't look to change anything in this upcoming budget. But if we find something that determines we should, we'll discuss it as a board and we'll make that determination. But for right now, we've got two, two things coming down the pipe that I think are gonna impact what our decision making is gonna be. All right. Okay. Let's, Bill, how do you feel? You ready to tackle it again?
Yeah, I think so. There's not really anything else substantive. They're excited about the roof. They have the check that they are going, they are depositing with the community foundation to start that fund. They've seeded the plot with winter rye to fix nitrogen in the soil, and they're gonna, they're looking forward to kicking off the community garden in the spring. And they are in, very actively drafting their recommendations for future uses, and hope, I think they're planning to submit that to us for the December work session.
Excellent.
As a draft.
Good. All right. Thank you. All right, that concludes our other business. So moving on to fear information, or FYI, I'm gonna report the following upcoming events. Thanksgiving, which is this Thursday, village offices will be closed on instant date, which is November twenty-fourth, Thursday, as well as Friday, which is November twenty-fifth. So village offices, Thursday and Friday. That means our village employees also, except for key and essential personnel like the police department, our village offices will be closed, and our village employees will have those days off. Is that right? Oh, okay. Yeah, and that's important to note, that there will not be garbage pickup or recyclables picked up on Thursday or Friday. Our guys do a great job of playing catch-up the following week, but if your garbage is slated to be picked up on Thursday or Friday, don't anticipate that happening. It will happen the following week. Good point. Thank you. All right. That concludes the business that I have, and we'll now move into the second and last public comment section. If you choose to speak, please step up to the, to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. Just a couple of things. Brendan Coyne, thirteen Pollock Court, Cornwall Hudson. The All Faith Thanksgiving Service will be held tomorrow night at seven thirty at St. Thomas, and it's a wonderful kickoff to a season of, season of gratitude. There'll be another prayer vigil for, for Ukraine this coming Sunday at three P M. In the warming shed at the Rings Pond. I'm catching Bill's problem here. And I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and express my gratitude for all the blessings that we have here in Cornwall Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for, during the public comment section? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna move on to board comments. I'm gonna start with Trustee Brain. As long as you got your larynx lubricated.
Apologies if you're watching online and had to be subjected to my coughing fit.
I don't have anything prepared. Just thank you to all the department heads for the work that they've done in our work session and in coordinating with Donahue Farm and in special events, and in everything else that you all do. And that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to Trustee Gaylord.
I just wanna wish everyone here and that's watching a happy Thanksgiving.
Excellent. Trustee Cornwright Wise. All right, I got a ditto. All right. And Deputy Mayor Kane?
I'll second those two.
Yeah. I'm gonna triple ditto then. All right. So without further ado, and having concluded the business set before this village board, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the business meeting tonight at nine oh four P M. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Keep in mind, the mics are still hot, so careful what you say, it'll be picked up.